Good evening. This 30th meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, it is my honor and pleasure to finally welcome you home to your first in-person meeting here at City Hall. Give her a round of applause. As a reminder for members and the press and members of the public and attendants, you must wear your mask on council chamber. This is consistent with the guidance that we received from the Mayor's Return of Service Commission to allow us to have maximum capacity here in the chambers, and we appreciate each and every one of you for your cooperation. For tonight's invocation, we have a very special guest, Pastor Damon Dorsey of Walk By Faith Ministries. He's going to deliver the invocation of our first virtual meeting. He delivered the invocation of our first virtual meeting and will do the same for our first in-person meeting. Pastor Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Let us pray. Every head bowed, every eye closed. God, it's once again that we come first and foremost saying thank you. God, regardless of our religious affiliation or political affiliation, we thank you for keeping us two long years throughout this pandemic. God, before we ask for anything, we want to thank you for everything, but it's in this moment that we ask a special blessing over this council, and I pray for each one of these council members individually and collectively as they've accepted the tough task and privilege that it is to lead our city. God, continue to grant them with the carriage that they need, the wisdom of Solomon, the strength of Esther for such a time as this. God, we come right now praying for every person that did not make it through these two years, for every life that was lost, we pray for their families, for their loved ones. God, we ask right now that you bless not only them, but this meeting. God, let every word that we say and every thought that we have be acceptable in your sight. And as we close this prayer, God, continue to please be with not just the council members, but their families. God, let us celebrate their successes as loud as critics shout about their failures. God, but we thank you in advance for what it is that you're getting ready to do. We know you to be a keeper, we know you to be a healer, we know you to be a deliverer, and we thank you for keeping us these two years, and we thank you for what you're getting ready to do. God, continue to bless God and keep us all in your words, your will, and your way, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. At this time, we will state the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to please formally thank Pastor Dorsey for those kind remarks and always being a friend of his government and this city council. At this time, I'm going to ask the clerk to call roll of members.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal of the March 21st, 2022 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, and the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two on your agendas. We will now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first nomination.
EA-22-0114 Berke Atella, Director, Department of General Services.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk?
EA-22-0115 Aloma Buma, Member, Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk?
EA-22-0116 Sarah Langmead, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk?
EA-22-0117 Honorable Zakiya Masaiya, Member, Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk?
EA-22-0118 Matthew Ware, Member, Commission on Sustainability.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Now we'll turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0213, Street Encroachment, 420 East Randall Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the construction and maintenance of a portion of a building to project into the public right-of-way on the east side of Henry Street on the property known as 420 East Randall Street and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the Department of Transportation.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk, 22-0214.
City Council Bill 22-0214, Franchise Underground Snowmelt System, for the purpose of granting a franchise to the Johns Hopkins Hospital to construct, use, and maintain an underground snowmelt system, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. On to 215, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0215, City Streets Closing Two Ten-Foot Alley's, for the purpose of condemning and closing of two ten-foot alleys bounded by East 23rd Street, Green Mount Avenue, and East 22nd Streets, as shown on a plat numbered 303-A-19A dated September 14th, 2021, prepared by the survey section and filed in the Office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the Department of Transportation.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, 216.
City Council Bill 22-0216, City Property Grant of Easement, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and the city council of Baltimore to grant a perpetual easement to the Maryland State Highway Administration for the purpose for the installation and maintenance of a traffic control device, sidewalk, and median in the vicinity of the intersection of MD-150 Eastern Avenue and the entrance to East Point Mall, Baltimore County, Maryland, as shown on plat 59795, filed in the State Highway Administration, State Roads Commission, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the Department of Transportation.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, 217.
City Council Bill 22-0217, Franchise Storm Drain Outfall, for the purpose of granting a franchise to 701 Caton LLC to construct, use, and maintain the storm drain outfall located in the city's Lower Gwens Fall Park adjacent to 707 South Caton Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, 21229, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the Department of Recreation and Parks.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk, 218.
City Council Bill 22-0218, City Property Renaming Robert E. Lee Park to Lake Roland Park, for the purpose of changing the name of the park known as Robert E. Lee Park located at 1,000 Lakeside Drive, Baltimore, Maryland, 21210 to Lake Roland Park. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, 219.
City Council Bill 22-0219, Planned Unit Development Amendment Harbor Point, for the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the Harbor Point Planned Unit Development. Sponsor, Cohen.
At this time, this body would like to recognize the councilman of the first district.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. This bill has been three years in the making and really excited to introduce it tonight. It will add density in an area where we've seen just great growth, and it's the product of really good conversation between the developer, community groups, and build. And it's going to mean a lot of local hire, commitment to affordable housing, and development done the right way. So excited to introduce this bill tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen, for that. That bill has been assigned also to Economic Community Development. On to 220, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0220, Study and Report Tax Increment Financing, for the purpose of requiring the Director of Finance, the City Administrator, the City Solicitor, the Commissioner for the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Director of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights to submit a report in collaboration with advocates, practitioners, and residents that details how tax increment financing can be used for community development and eliminating vacant and abandoned properties and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Ramos Bullock.
At this time, the council would like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to stand before this council for my first time. Thank you. Great to see everybody here. This legislation creates a study and report mechanism so that we would get a report back from the various agencies that were mentioned about tax increment financing. This has been a type of financing that we've been using for various projects across the city, and we want to figure out what the impact has been, the equity issues, and also if we can actually use this tool for addressing vacant and abandoned properties. So thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
No, thank you for this bill. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, 221.
City Council Bill 22-0221, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Units to Two Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District, Variant 2315 Utah Place, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 Zoning District on the property known as 2315 Utah Place, Block 3426, Lot 022, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. Sponsor, Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. On to 222, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0222, Fire and Police Employees Retirement Systems Technical Amendments, for the purpose of amending provisions of the Fire and Police Employees Retirement System law pertaining to the definition of regular interest for valuation purposes, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the Fire and Police Employees Retirement System of the City of Baltimore. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the Fire and Police Retirement Systems.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. We'll now move on to resolutions being introduced for first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 22-0100R, Informational Hearing, In rem Tax Sale Foreclosure, for the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Deputy City Solicitor, and other relevant parties to come before the city council to describe the in rem foreclosure process, inform the council on the capacity of the Department of Housing and Community Development to increase the in rem foreclosure cases, inform the council on the role of the Circuit Court in the in rem foreclosure process, and recommend measures the city council can take to support these efforts. Sponsor, Ramos Bullock, Torrance.
At this time, I would like to recognize the sponsor of this bill, Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. During the 30-day examination that the mayor's office did about vacant properties, I sent a pretty long letter about some of the recommendations that I had, and so the bills that you saw in the last meeting and in this meeting are moving forward on those recommendations. This particular resolution came out of that, but also that I had a lot of questions after the last meeting about what is judicial in rem foreclosure, and so I thought we should do a hearing to educate the council on what it is. I think it is the best way that we have to address privately-owned vacant properties. It is something that I've worked on in my past role, and so I'm very interested in making sure that it gets really well done here in the city to be able to address our vacant and abandoned properties. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. That resolution has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee. Next up on our agenda is the consent calendar. We did have a presentation tonight from Jubilee Arts. We're trying to see if they're here. If not, we're going to continue to move on. Yes, they're actually coming in right now. So I'm going to introduce them while they come up. So for tonight's Showcase Baltimore, I'm proud to welcome Jubilee Arts Baltimore. Members, you should have a copy of the presentation at your desk. At this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Black, the program director, and ask her to introduce the rest of her presenters. Ms. Black, the floor is yours.
May I please pardon me as you get comfortable really quickly? My name is Ms. Black. As it was said just above, we are representing Jubilee Arts and our Youth and Business Program. Today, representing us, we have our Jubilee Arts Program Manager Kiara, I mean, our Youth and Business Program Manager Kiara. We have our alumni and Program Assistant Imani, and we have our participant Tajay. So we've come together today to prepare a small presentation. Please pardon me, we just walked far as we parked our car. That's where my breath is. But we prepared a small presentation. I want to tell you a bit about what we do, who we are, and how long we've been doing that. I'll start. Some of you have the presentation already. Some of you have the presentation already. Some of you do not. For those of you who do not, I'll try my best to be descriptive. So again, my name is Ms. Black. I'm the Program Arts Director for Jubilee Arts Baltimore. We are an arts-based organization that has been in the community under a umbrella of Intersection of Change, which has three other, two other components, Martha's Place and Strength to Love Too Far. I am representing the Jubilee Arts portion. We have been doing arts programming for 20-plus years, specifying for the 21217 area code that west side of Baltimore is our population and our focus, although we provide arts programming for others through virtual programming. We have Youth and Business, which you'll hear about today, arts programming, a program called Art at Work, teaching artists, artist residencies, and I'll tell you how you can get involved. Our Youth and Business Program is a program that teaches about entrepreneurship, graphic design, basic business skills 101. We have a stipend for our students. We sow into our students, and we encourage the whole lifestyle of entrepreneurship and it being possible right now where they are. Our arts classes, we currently have Draw Long, youth clay, ballet for both young adults and older adults, line dance, self-care, adult clay, senior clay. We service everyone from three to seniorship. We have so many classes that we've been providing, and it's been fruitful in our community. Our community comes out for us. We used to have maybe 20-plus to 30 students in almost every class, but with COVID, we transferred virtually. Those followers followed us to the computers, even our elders who don't like tech, aren't very tech savvy. They still came to us during COVID, where we provided free classes. We now charge a scale from $0 to $6 for adults and $0 to $3 for children. We now came back in person. We just started in person this session in February, and I'm proud to say that we have many of our participants who've returned, and we also keep a virtual component if anyone is interested or if any of your youth are interested. Our Art at Work Program. Art at Work is a program that collaborates with three to five visual artists to work to build murals with local muralists and creatives in the city. We pay those artists. They do every step from design concept to completion of the project. We have one in works right now, but if you go around the city of Baltimore, a lot of the ones, especially on the west side, the 21217 area code, a lot of our artists and our students have been a part of those. My favorite right now is a cross from Ace Hardware, Bahai, Giant on 33rd. Go check that out. Teaching artists, our staff is completely, we're completely staffed by teaching artists, meaning artists actively in their field, still creating art right now. They take an hour out of their week, every week, to teach our art classes. They give back. We want to pay them so much more and do so much more for them, but these artists have a passion for community as well as artwork. We have about eight to 10 teaching staff right now. And then last but not least, our artist residencies. Our current resident is this artist called Davina Gracia Foto. She has an exhibit called Jezebel. You can see it right on the walls of Jubilee. If you drive by 1947 Pennsylvania Avenue, you can see all the works on the side. This program is only able to stay focused and stay, we're only able to keep providing this type of content for the community through our community members, through people like you, through getting our voice out like this, and if it wasn't for people like you, we would not be able to continue this type of work. This work is healing. Our theme this session is healing through art. We are sometimes the first introduction to art for the next generation of artists. We have a goal of reaching over 400 participants. We are very close to that goal, and we want to do this yearly. My goal is to get at least 10 people in every class every time we have a class so that we can reach that goal faster. We need more knowledge, we need more resources, we need more access to these type of conversations, and I appreciate being here, and I appreciate you letting us spread the news and spread the Jubilee joy. Next, I will refer you to our phenomenal program, Youth in Business. I'm going to start with our program manager, Ms. Kiara Johnson. Can you tell us a little bit about Youth in Business?
Hi, everybody. Like Ms. Black introduced, my name is Kiara Johnson, Youth and Business Program Manager. So I'm going to start by reintroducing our team. So this is Imani, our alumni leader and our program assistant, Mr. Tajay, who is a youth designer slash business owner, been Youth in Business. Youth in Business is a teen entrepreneurial program, so we teach leadership skills through having the youth participate in a hands-on art-based business. Youth in Business was founded in 2017, and, you know, we've been active ever since. My usually, our usual business model, you know, we go out to sales and we actively sell, but due to the current comment, we've transitioned into a hybrid of in-person and telemarketing or virtual marketing. So our vision for Youth in Business, vision, mission, our core values, so the vision is where youth discover their passion and make steps toward their goals. Youth in Business's mission is to cultivate entrepreneurship's leadership skills of high school youth, providing that hands-on art-based business, and our core values are marketing, sorry, not marketing, cooperative, economic empowerment, personal and professional identity development, and most importantly, youth voice. We believe that the youth have every right to voice any opinion that they have. We make sure that they have ample space to make decisions within the business. That includes like simple stuff like youth that come into the business, interviewing new youth, and just general business aspects of going out, how many t-shirts we print, what designs we do, and things like that. But thank you. We've all, thank you. We've also just, not too recently, but recently started to expand to offering other services like graphic design work. We also do ceramics, and so one of our services that we provide is creating mosaic address signs for people within the community, and that application is available on our website, jubileartsbaltimore.org, sorry, slash Youth in Business. Guys can check that out. And then our program structure, we usually go from Tuesday to Thursday. We offer design business, and like I said, ceramics, from 5:30 to 7:30. And so now, I guess I can kind of tell you guys about myself and how I started Youth in Business. So growing up as an artist, I was always told that art wasn't really like a viable career, right? I was always told that I needed to be super smart or like super athletic in order to make a career, and though I am super smart, but I always felt drawn to like doodlings and passion, my passion was always art. And so one of my best friends referred me to Jubilee Arts, where he founded Youth in Business, where I came on as a second cohort of youth to continue the mission of Youth in Business, and it spoke to me so much that I've just, I stayed on for, since 2017, and just went up through the ranks. So I started as a participant, and then I moved on to alumni mentor through the medical program like Imani, and now I've just recently become the program manager, and, you know, I appreciate Jubilee Arts for working with me as I go through this journey, is learning about how to manage others for the first time and how to continue to manage myself and as an entrepreneur and as an artist, and to help other youth to do the same. But that's all from my story. I would like to introduce Imani.
Is there a website or something we could send everybody to?
Yes, for Taj?
Yep.
Absolutely. Can you give them the website?
Yep, so the website for Jubilee Arts and Youth in Business is jubileartsbaltimore.org, and Youth in Business is slash Youth in Business.
And we thank you so much for coming out and spreading the word about Jubilee Arts. I'm pretty sure if you know anything about west Baltimore and arts and young folks, you know and have heard of Jubilee Arts, they've been serving the community for a very, very long time, and we thank you for the opportunity to come and present us today.
Yes, if you would like to, again, if you would like to reach out, I really, really suggest that you follow our Instagrams, @JubileeArts1, @YouthinBusiness. That's it? Yes, and make sure that you contact Tajay, who is a participant who grew up in the same, the same type of story that Kiara started as a participant and is now the program manager, salary position. We're talking about a youth from west Baltimore to literally work up through this program and now is a part of this program. That's the Jubilee way. So we want you to really feel that and get that from us, and you can see the ranks moving on up here with program assistant. So it just, it just grows. So thank you all again.
No, thank you. Thank you. We know that, Ms. Black, we know that art is undeniably tied to our past, our present, and more importantly, our future. We understand and know that it's not only therapeutic to some, but it's also a way of life and a way of living, and we appreciate your joy and Jubilee Arts for spreading that in west Baltimore to the whole city of Baltimore. So thank you so much for coming out to the council tonight. Have a good evening. We're going to jump back into our agenda. Next up is the consent calendar. You can find a consent calendar in section eight, the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. The consent calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
So there is a motion on the floor for us to conduct the remainder of the meeting in short titles. If I do not see any unreadiness or questions or concerns, we will be in short titles. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could please move on to the first bill. Let's see.
Council Bill 21-0185, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to Eight Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variant 2044 Walbrook Avenue.
At this time, I would like to recognize the Vice President of the Baltimore City Council and Chair of the Committee, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we're moving into our non-virtual hearings, this is probably the announcement for our last, hopefully, virtual hearings. Bill number 21-0185, this bill was heard on March 29th, 2022. Findings of Fact and Amendments were sent to council members. I move the findings of fact.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading as approved. Madam Clerk, 21-186. Madam Clerk, 21-186.
Council Bill 21-0186, zoning conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R7 zoning district variance, 1635 Gwynne's Falls Parkway.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Vice President Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. For Bill number 21-0186, this bill was heard on March 29th, 2022. I move the findings of fact.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, finding of facts are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I move the amendments.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill as favorable as amended.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
Council Bill 21-0096R, approving the submission of an application to the state of Maryland for the re-designation of Baltimore City's modified, consolidated enterprise zone and its focus areas.
At this time, the council would like to recognize Madam Vice President Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. For Bill number 22-0096R, this bill was also heard on, well, this bill was heard on March 22nd, 2022. I move the bill as favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. This resolution is now adopted. We're going to turn to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, EA 21-0089.
EA 21-0089, Alexandria Grayson, Member, Commission on Sustainability.
At this point, we'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on March 24th to consider 24 nominations to various boards and commissions. And so I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0090, Stacy Griffin, Member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
I yield the floor to you, Chairman Schleifer.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0091, Cedric Lee, Member, Commission on Sustainability.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
I'd like to move the nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0092, Jared Louse, Member, Commission on Sustainability.
I'd like to recognize the Chair, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0093, Kevin O'Connor, Member, Board of Fire Commissioners.
Chairman Schleifer, I yield the floor.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0094, Erica Fox, Member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
I yield the floor to you, Chairman Schleifer.
I move the nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0095, Tisha Guthrie, Member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
We recognize the Chair of the Committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0096, Anthony Williams, Member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0098, Robert Charles Brendel, Member, Environmental Control Board.
Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0099, Christina Delgado, Member, Environmental Control Board.
Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0100, Andrew Flax, Member, Environmental Control Board.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0101, Melvin Jaduleng, Member, Environmental Control Board.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0102, Zoe Rydsky, Member, Environmental Control Board.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0103, Carlinian Thompson, Member, Environmental Control Board.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0104, Alice Valpita, Member, Environmental Control Board.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0105, Robert Shelton, Member, Board of Finance.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0106, Nicole Battle, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0107, Jill Dennis, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0108, Catherine Good, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair, I yield the floor to you.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0109, Peter Morril, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
I yield the floor to you, Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0110, Todd Paulian, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair, I yield the floor to you.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is now approved. We're on the back end stretch, folks. Hold on. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0111, Ann Powell, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is now approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0112, Dr. Gary D. Rodwell, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, nomination is approved. And last but certainly not least, Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0113, Harry T. Spikes, The Second, Member, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, that nomination is approved and we are out of executive appointment. So give yourselves a round of applause. That was long. All right. We will now turn to bills on third reading for final passage. And before we get into it, I wanted to remind members that there are three bills that appear on tonight's published agenda for the third reading that must still be approved by the Board of Estimates. Those bills are on the BOE agenda for Wednesday, April the 6th. If approved, we will consider them on our April 25th meeting. The three bills are 21-0182, 21-0184, and 22-201. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please read the bills.
21-0102, Building Permits, Disposal Plan Requirement, The John F. Chalmers Senior Act. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
21-0161, City Operations, Net Zero Emissions of Greenhouse Gases. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
21-0166, Rezoning, Block 3635, Lot 055. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
21-0171, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District variance, 811 Chauncey Avenue. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
21-0180, Rezoning, 2525 Ensler Drive. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. And last but not least, 21-190, Madam Clerk.
21-0190, Repill of Ordinance 0894, 0895, and 0896. Westport Waterfront Development District, Westport Special Taxing District, and State Obligation Pledge. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now we're going to turn over to committee announcements. Chairs, if you could, please stand and I'll recognize you if you have any additional committee announcements for the council tonight. Hearing and seeing none? No committee announcements? All right. Any regular announcements for members of the council? At this point, I'll recognize Chair of Ways and Means, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, can you skip me and come back in one second?
Sure, we can skip you and come back. Is there any other regular announcements for members of the council? Well, while Chairman Costello is working on that, remember tomorrow is the State of the City address from our mayor. It's going to be in person here in council chambers. Obviously, the past two have been virtual. So tonight's a great occasion, not only for us, but not only for our residents, but for their overall growth and health and movement forward of the city out of COVID. And tomorrow will be representative of that as well with the mayor and the State of the City speech. At this time, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We don't have bill numbers yet, but just to put a placeholder on everyone's calendar, the Ways and Means Committee will be holding a budget overview of the FY 2023 budget with BBMR and Baltimore City Public School System at 3:00 PM on Thursday, May 26th. Later that evening at 6:00 PM will be Baltimore City Council Taxpayers Night. And then budget hearings will begin at 9:00 AM on Tuesday, May 31st. The first day they will go until 5:30 PM. And then Wednesday, June 1st, Thursday, June 2nd, Friday, June 3rd, Monday, June 6th, and Tuesday, June 7th from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we go to adjournment, I would like to first thank the staff of the, of City Council President's Office for all your hard work in ensuring that we got to this point and working directly hand in hand with the administration. The person that had led the charge for us is Matt Stegman. He goes, flies under the radar, but is always responsive and always delivers. And I think tonight is a testament to that. We had less than two weeks to ensure that we planned this out based off of the mayor's executive orders. We understand and know the importance of tonight's meeting. You know, it's one thing to be able to meet virtually or talk to someone over an email. It's another thing to see your city government function and work face to face. And that's what tonight is about and moving forward. So again, thank you, Matt, and thank you to the team. But also thank you to each and every one of you, not only the council members and your staff, but also to our residents and to the media who came out tonight to participate in this momentous occasion. So thank you so much. With that, I'm going to turn it over and recognize Madam Vice President Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The special meeting for State of the City will be held on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, at 1:00 PM here in council chambers. And may we have a moment of silence for the now,